Musongole also had the Zimba Town Council, the ones that took us to lunch break. And now, still to come, we do have Pemba Council. We also have Senazongwe Town Council making appearance before this committee. So I'd like to urge you to be with us on this great channel with Parliament Television. We'll cross over to the committee, to the chapter.
Chapter 12 of the laws of Zambia, which gives immunity to members of parliament when they are in the main house as well as in committee, and the same is extended to you to the extent that what you submit to this committee is factual and not misleading. This means that you cannot be taken to any courts of law or outside the parliament that it princi's. Your submissions are protected. However, should you deliberately mislead the committee, the same can be used against you. So the committee is comforted that you cannot deliberately mislead it and so ask you to make freely your submissions as when called upon to do so. We'll start our deliberations with introduction. I now call upon your council secretary to introduce yourself and allow your team to equally introduce themselves.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Chair and your headboard committee. My name, Chair, is Chironbo Samuel, Council Secretary, Pemba. I'm not alone, Chair. I've come with my officers. I'll allow them to introduce themselves. Thank you, Chair.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Krista Beomazua, Director Finance, Pemba.
Good afternoon, Chair. I'm Gift Mwetwa, Director Planning, Pemba Council.
Good afternoon, Chair. I'm Inonge Dambé, Internal Auditor, Pemba Town Council.
Thank you so much. Our permanent witness from the Office of the Auditor General.
Good afternoon, Chair and your committee. Good afternoon, Pemba Town Council. My name is Alfonshas Malambo. I'm the Director under the Office of the Auditor General. I'm accompanied by other officers who introduce themselves.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Chair. Good afternoon, Chair, and good afternoon, members of the committee. And also, good afternoon, Pemba Town Council. My name is Martin Muni. I'm the Assistant Director, Southern Province. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Luenda Sinyani from the Planning and Research Department in the Office of the Auditor General.
Thank you so much. Our permanent witness from the Ministry of Finance.
Good afternoon, Chair, and good afternoon, Honorable Members of Parliament. Good afternoon, Pemba Town Council. My name is Jefan Siame from the Office of the Control of Internal Audit, Ministry of Finance.
Thank you so much. Permanent witness from the Ministry of Local Government.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, too, and the honorable members of your committee. Welcome, Pemba Town Council. I'm Kazinga Kennedy from the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, honorable members of the committee, and good afternoon, Pemba Town Council. My name is Joyce Kwanza from Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our permanent witness from the Local Government Service Commission.
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson, and good afternoon. Good afternoon to the members, to the honorable members of parliament. Good afternoon to you, ladies and gentlemen, from Pemba Town Council. My name is Simkonda Shadrak, Deputy Commission Secretary, Local Government Service Commission.
Thank you so much, Secretariat. Thank you so much, Chairperson, for the opportunity. Good afternoon to you. Good afternoon, honorable members, once again. CS and your team, good afternoon. I am Chidimboi Elijah from the Office of the Clerk of National Assembly, and you are welcome. Thank you so much, honorable members of the committee. Starting with the honorable member for the honorable MP from Fumbwe.
Thank you, Honorable Chairperson, and good afternoon. Good afternoon, honorable colleagues, and good afternoon, our permanent witness and also secretariat. And good afternoon, Pemba. Welcome to your committee. My name is Elliot Kamondo. I'm a Member of Parliament from Fumbwe. Thank you.
Thank you, MP for Usakili.
Thank you very much, Chair. Pemba Town Council, good afternoon. Kalobo Paviuma is my name. I represent the people of Usakili constituency, Kitwe, in the Kopabout.
The MP for Kaumbwe.
Good afternoon, Chair. Good afternoon, permanent witnesses, and then, Pemba, good afternoon. I am Honorable Dr. Aaron Moza, Member of Parliament for Kaumbwe, constituency in Petoka District. And I'm a member of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have one of our members online, the Honorable Member of Parliament for Dundumwezi.
Chair, thank you so very much. Good afternoon, Pemba Town Council. Chair, thank you very much for connecting me from Dundumwezi constituency, Kalombe, Southern Province.
Thank you so much, witness. My name is Christopher Shakafuswa, Member of Parliament for Mandevu constituency of Lusaka district, and I'm privileged to host, the constituency hosts the National Assembly of Zambia. So you are welcome to Mandevu and your committee. I'm the Vice Chairperson of the committee. Allow me, Council Secretary, on behalf of the committee and indeed on my own behalf, invite you to make your submission.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'll start with the query on A. The cause of the query, Chair. First, as management, we acknowledge the findings of the auditors who are on the ground and wishes to report that the council budget estimates for 2023 amounted to 14,562 quacha. The actual income in the same year was 12,561,266 quacha. This, Chair, gave us a performance of correction efficiency of 86.3%. However, Chair, there was an adverse variance of 2,804 quacha, out of which 1,299,898 quacha is locally generated revenue, broken down as follows. 854 quacha, Chair, is personal levy, was personal levy, which was not received with the license fees in 2023, but was later received in 2024. Out of 889,662 quacha, 210 was income that was expected from the sale of bulls. These are male animals, Chair. We have a farm where we get milk that we sell. But with time, we have bulls that have been born at the farm, and the intention was that we dispose them off to reduce the cost of feeding them and also realize income to buy more ifers for giving us milk. This, Chair, has not taken place. We are waiting approval by the ministry. We submitted a request, Chair, to the ministry for approval. As you are aware, Chair, these are government assets. We cannot just sell them. We need approval. The 679,000 was income, again, Chair, that was expected from the milk sales, not realized during the period under review as a result of the animals, 16 ifers, that were encuffed, and only two animals were being milked, thus causing the reduction in milk production and sales. Then, out of the 1,183,360 quacha, Chair, this is local government equalization fund. Out of the 1,183,360, local government equalization fund, 887,846 quacha, 23 in way, was not received in the under review from the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development, but was later received in the subsequent year. The 285,685, Chair, was deduction at source for union fees and audit fees. Action taken, Chair. Management wishes to report that personal levy and license fees were paid together in January 2024. On the sale of bulls, Chair, management wrote to the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development requesting for authority to sell the bulls, awaiting approval. On the low milk production and sales, what we have done, Chair, we have instructed the manager, the problem that we have seen is uncontrolled mating because of the bulls that are now man at the farm. We have instructed the manager to separate, put the females and the males separate in separate products. Our hope is that this may control the mating and reduce animals getting pregnant hungry. The remedial measure, Chair, management to ensure that income collected, income is collected within the financial year. Then, on the delayed approval to sell bulls, management to make a follow-up with the ministry. On B, Chair, again, management acknowledges the findings of the auditors were on the ground and wishes to state that the council has met its to collect 281,268,728, of which 1,696,20 was collected, giving a performance of 63%. The under collection, Chair, of 991,108, with an adverse performance of 37,000, was due to various factors, of which the major one was the drought situation in the district, which resulted in drop in crop failure. Our income, Chair, as Pemba depend normally on the farming. Pemba is predominantly a farming district. And the low milk production from the farm, due to most animals which were encuffed or the bulls that were marked for sale, we are not sell, we are not sold. We are still awaiting the, awaiting approval by the ministry. Further, Chair, the land acquisition advert, which we made to our locals to empower them, the response was not favorable. Action taken, Chair. Management wishes to report that personal levy and license fees were paid together in January 2024. On the sale of bulls, management again wrote to the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development requesting for authority to sell the bulls, awaiting approval. On low milk production and sales, management instructed the manager to control mating by putting females and bulls in the separate paddocks. Chair, there is appendix two, where is a letter to the ministry, the ledger for the receipts of personal levy and licenses, and also the advert that we have made on our website and also our Facebook page to the outside to access these plots. Remedial measure, Chair, management to ensure that income is collected within the financial year. On the delayed approval to sell bulls, management will make a follow-up with the ministry.
Just a point of clarification. Your appendices, they are numbered, but in the appendix section, they have letters. How do we reconcile the two?
On each leaf, Chair, when you open the appendix, there is appendix one indicated there on top, which gives a tabulation of the attachments. We apologize.
And B is two.
Yes.
You can go on.
We apologize for that, Chair.
It's fine.
Thank you. Chair, I proceed to the target outputs.
Yes, please go ahead. On page seven.
Chair, responses to the queries raised in the operation plan table. Start with Program One. Cause of query: Management wishes to report that the query is attributed to the two meetings, Finance Committee meeting and Ordinary Council meeting for the last quarter of 2023, which were both held in January to consider the business of the last quarter and the business of the financial year ended 31st December 2023. Action taken, Chair. The Finance Committee meeting and Ordinary Council meetings were both held in the month of January. Appendix three, minutes of the finance and council and letters to the ministry, photos of also the sports tournament. Sorry, Chair. The remedial measure, the council ensure that the planned activities in the operation plan are implemented as planned. On Program Two, Chair. The cause of query: Management acknowledges the findings of the auditors and wishes to report that the query is attributed to the overestimation of the number of condoms that were planned to be distributed in 2023, which is under than 20,000. Action taken. Officers has been advised to come up with realistic figures when coming up with output targets, at the same time ensuring that targeted beneficiaries are not left out and that targets are met. Remedial measure, Chair, management to ensure that realistic figures are put as output targets. Program Number Three. Cause of query: Management acknowledges the findings of the auditor and wishes to report that the cause of the query is attributed to the five animals which were not bought due to the delay in approving of the request for authority to sell the bulls submitted to the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. The proceeds from the sales, we are supposed to finance the procurement of the five animals. Action taken. Management wrote a request for authority to sell the bulls, awaiting the response. Remedial measure, the council will ensure that planned activities in the operation plan are implemented as planned. Program Four, Chair. Management acknowledges the findings of the auditors and wishes to... Management wishes to report that it has... Sure that planned activities, Chair, in the operation plan are implemented as planned. Program Five. Management acknowledges the findings, acknowledges the findings of the auditor and wishes to report that the cause of the query is attributed to the delay in the completion of council offices. Chair, we embarked on the construction of council offices. There are no offices in Pemba. And we had 60%. We requested the CDF committee to assist us with funds because we are depending on the 20%. The CDF committee and the MP have been very supportive and very generous. So, Chair, Phase One and Phase Two, we are completed, and Phase Three is now at procurement stage. The CDF committee has assisted us with funds. Action taken, Chair. Management has since completed what Phase One and Two and is now working on the next phase, which is currently under procurement. Measure, remedial measure, management, Chair, again, will ensure that the construction of a civic center is expedited. Program Three, Chair. Program Six. Cause of query: Management, Chair, acknowledges the findings of the auditors and wishes to report that the cause of the query is attributed to the council not ordering a sports tournament due to lack of funds. Action taken. Management has since secured funds under the Devolved Community Sports Program under the Ministry of Youth and Sports. We held a successful sports tournament, Chair, in 2024, and the pictures, Chair, are attached.
Please go ahead.
Remedial measure, the council ensure that planned activities in the operation plan are implemented as planned. Program Number Seven. Management acknowledges the findings of the auditors and wishes to report that the cause of the query is lack of provision of fire services due to inadequate funds and lack of equipment and tools. Management, action taken, Chair. Management wishes to report that it has since started providing basic fire services and has budgeted for some fire protective clothing. Remedial measure, the council, Chair, will ensure that activities planned in the operation plan are implemented as planned. Appendix Two, Chair. Cause of the query: Management acknowledges the findings of the auditors and wishes to state that the unspent funds were as a result of the equalization fund, which was received on 29th December 2023, meant for operations, which was expended on 2nd January 2024. Action taken, Chair. The funds in question were expended on 2nd January 2024. We have attachments of the bank statements showing the receipts of the fund and also the expenditure. And also included, Chair, are payment vouchers for salaries that were expended on 2nd January 2024. Remedial measure, Chair. Management will ensure that all funds are spent within the accounting period and remaining funds are reported accordingly. Appendix Twenty, Chair. Cause of query: Management acknowledges the findings of auditors and that the six properties in question were inherited from the mother council, Choma Municipal Council, and no title deeds were transferred to Pemba Town Council at that time. Action taken. Management wishes to report that the properties in question were reported to the Plans, Works, Development and Re- estates Committee and subsequently approved by the council during the ordinary council meeting under minute number CM28012025 for recommendation of offer by the Ministry of Lands. This, Chair, follows the area submission that we made to the ministry for the same purpose. However, the title deeds for council properties could not be processed due to the change of systems from manual to digital. The Ministry of Lands advised Pemba Council to resubmit fresh applications for onward considerations, which has since been done. Chair, this is Appendix Five. This minutes of the PWD meeting and council and copy of the reservation letter to Ministry of Lands. Remedial measure, the council ensure that the process of acquiring title deeds is expedited. Appendix Twenty Eight, Chair. Failure to settle statutory and other obligations. Cause of query: Management acknowledges the auditor general's findings and wishes to report that the council was unable to remedy the statutory contributions, obligations due to inadequate resources. Action taken. The council, Chair, has since started liquidating the areas on the statutory obligation funds. Appendix Six, Chair, show the schedule of payments on statutory obligations and also payment vouchers. Remedial measure, the council will continue to liquidate outstanding statutory obligations, resources. Chair, that ends my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Council Secretary. I'll now invite points of clarification from the honorable members of the committee. We'll start with the honorable MP from Fumbwe.
Chair, just a comment on one observation from most of the councils that inherited certain properties. It looks like most of the councils, when they inherited the properties, they decided to not to acquire the titles. We were hoping that maybe Pemba would tell us a different story. However, they are also telling us they inherited. So should it be the tendency that when you inherit something, you don't legalize actually what you have inherited? Because I want to ask the council secretary, when did you acquire these properties? Maybe I can make a comment after that.
Yes, Council Secretary.
Chair, from the information sitting in my office and what I know is that Pemba became a district in 2012 and started operations in 2013. I must agree with the observation of the honorable Member of Parliament that from that time, actually, serious action should have been taken to ensure that these properties have titles. But you may be aware, Chair, that there is another ministry that handles the processing of titles. Our role as a local authority is to submit information to them. Although we did at a later stage, we took an action, Chair. We submitted earlier. That was in 2022, when we submitted, and we received a response. I used to send my director of planning is here to go and make a follow-up because we did not want this query again to reoccur. I must also admit, Chair, that the coming of the auditors was a reminder that we needed to push this issue expeditiously. The observations of the honorable MP is on point. We could have done better, Chair, and submit.
And Kamondo, follow-up?
Yes, I think just a word of, the council secretary has preempted me what I wanted to say. What is it that you are going to tell now the committee that things are not going to be the same? Because we have received this, I don't want to go to the submission which I've given. Because when you say you submitted earlier, it doesn't still qualify in any case. The status quo still remains the same. Meaning that if you had submitted slightly earlier than what you are talking about, something different could have happened. Maybe the word of encouragement is that Pemba, in other areas, you are doing very well. Yes, but when it comes to this, this is something that really needs to be improved. I think you also need to consult your ministry, the Ministry of Local Government, like other councils have done, so that it can be taken at that level. Yes, if you have failed, maybe at that level, ministerial level, that way maybe it can, it can help so that this query doesn't continue resurfacing and asking you about the same things. I think this is not right.
Thank you so much. Honorable Dr., there was a hand before Honorable Dr. Maza, Honorable Kalobo.
Thank you very much, Chair.
May I take the committee to page ten? Cause of query and spent funds. On the action taken. The local authorities informed us that all the funds were expended on the second January twenty twenty four, and there are evidences on appendix four, which is D in this case. So may I take the committee to appendix four? On appendix four Chair. There are payment vouchers that are not properly acquitted. And again, they have duplicated them. For example, this voucher number zero 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 one, quadro, zero one. Before duplicating it, there are also two copies. I don't know if they are trying to manage the figure in question. Then after, I don't know, after this statement, I don't know what you may call it. Because it's not a bank statement. The same voucher number, quadro zero one, is appearing with a different figure, hundred and one thousand, two hundred and ninety nine. The first two, they have got the same figure, five hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and thirty six. Same voucher number. And the three of them, they are not properly acquitted, none of them received. Proceed. Same voucher number. Quadro one, quadro zero one is also appearing with forty two thousand kwacha. It was not also properly acquitted. Same voucher number is also appearing twice, forty two thousand. And there's a there's a document which they are just typing in the office. Again, same voucher number. Quadro one, quadro zero one. Again, bearing another figure, one hundred and seventy seven thousand, five hundred and sixty nine. Not properly acquitted also. But it has a supporting document. Is it, this is the bank, the bank transfer. A proper bank transfer, this one. Another payment voucher. Payment voucher. Zero 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 three two five two. Not properly acquitted. It's also appearing twice. It has a bank statement. From Zanako. Another payment voucher, zero 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 three two five four. Not properly acquitted. Also appearing twice with the same figure. My question, Tangkrak, is why are you duplicating the payment voucher? You just sit on your computer and type something and start writing? And why are they not properly acquitted? And these are ones, you have got two payment vouchers that are properly supported with bank statements. On these other ones, why didn't you do the same? Because we expected the bank statement, not a document where you just sit in the council, on the computer, you start typing to balance the figures. Why this kind of behaviour? Is it in accounting, is it acceptable? Thank you Chair.
Thank you so much, Council Secretary. You may respond. Feel free to delegate where need me.
Chair, before, thank you very much, the Honourable Member of Parliament from Fumboy. Before I delegate to the Director of Finance, I must admit that these are system-generated vouchers. Our accounting software produces these vouchers. And it said that the code, the payment voucher, was not changed by the officers to indicate the separate payment vouchers that are made for separate items. The observation is correct. But on the payments Chair, there could have been just an extra payment voucher when the officers were filing for one zero one, two ninety nine. That could have been filed together with the other vouchers. It's not supposed to be here. On the acquittors, I'll allow my Director of Finance to come in. And Chair, I must also, if you look at the way the payment vouchers have been photocopied, they are faint. When you go at where it says audited, you will find it looking blank. But if you look closely, you'll find that the auditor actually did audit the payment. Make sure.
Director of Finance? Your microphone?
Thank you Chair, these are salaries which were paid to the workers. So you do not expect to see the whole amount sitting in the bank statement. When we are paying, it will go to individual accounts for the employees. So what you'll be seeing in the bank statement, it's the individual payments. So what is showing in the bank statement is at the point when we received the money. To show that actually the money came late, we received it at the end of the month. So that was the whole essence of attaching the bank statement.
Honourable Kalogo, follow-up?
Thank you very much Chair. With regards to the auditor on the payment voucher. Even if I agree with you that yes, it's looking faint, still, it is not properly acquitted. Who received? Who received? And again, DF is saying bank statement. This is, we are saying, you know, to such a document, want a proper bank. On the other vouchers, I've told you, there's a proper bank statement. This document is not authentic. What did you call this document? It's not a bank statement according to us. So as of now, the evidence that can support this, all the vouchers here, is a bank statement. We have said no to these other banks. We haven't said no, because they are proper bank statements. So, and the question why people are not receiving is still comes. On the other payment vouchers, they are not audited, they are clear. It's not, they are not even on some of them, yes, the first two. I can see some faint writings, but on the other ones, it's clear, clear, clear plain. Where was the auditor? Why did you bypass the auditor, the internal auditor? What was the motive behind for a responsible person to bypass the auditor, the internal auditors?
Yes, Tangkrak?
Chair, thank you very much. I'll start with payment for salaries Chair. What is attached here is a system-generated receipt which shows where the money was paid to employees direct in their accounts. This is the one which is attached. This document on its own shows how money was received by various individuals, including the names are here. That is to confirm that money was received by staff. This statement that is attached. Then on the payment vouchers Chair, on the auditor, although she will come in. I've seen the payment vouchers there. It is just that it is faint. But the payment vouchers show that the auditors did audit, I submit Chair.
Yes?
Our grades, the other two, there is a fantasy in it. The other ones is plain. Then, that system-generated document you are talking about, are you able to establish to this committee that how authentic this document is? The authenticity of this document, are you able to to prove to this committee? Anything? They are going to use to prove to this committee that that system-generated document is authentic and it is carrying correct evidence. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Yes, Tangkrak?
Chair, the other documents that we can refer to to support the documents that we have attached is the bank statement. Because the bank statement will show the outflow of the equivalent amount that was paid to staff.
Do you have the bank statement?
It is there on appendix two, although it was attached for the other query. We also have one extra copy, if you can allow Chair.
The bank statement is for salaries?
It's for the bank here. That is where we draw salaries. It is able to show the outflow of this to the equivalent amount.
Okay, while we look at that, Mr Kasinga, you wanted to make a comment?
Thank you Chair, indeed I wanted to make a comment. Possibly maybe with the item that is on the floor, I could start with that if permitted Chair.
Please go ahead.
I've looked at the the statement that is attached. This is a payroll statement. Possibly with guidance, CS and team, what you could have done, any reports that you to them and sign them off as you attach them as appendices, it will help to the committee. But otherwise for them. But the material item that I had Chair was on the issue of title deeds, to give the comfort to the committee and all the councils, just in case they miss what ministry guided. The Ministry of Lands Chair was engaged in November and by December, we have a framework of working to speed up the issuance of title deeds to all council properties. And by that, I just want to state that the councils, all the hundred and sixteen councils, were addressed on this matter, guidance given, and we are hopeful that by the next audit or so, unless there is negligence, all council properties would be speeded up. We are grateful to the Commission of Lands that she has actually assigned a dedicated team that is working with us. So I thought that we could do, place that on record. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Honourable Kalogo.
Firstly, why didn't you attach this? Then, okay, what under the bridge? How do you explain these other vouchers? Because there's no explanation. That are plain. Let me take you to him. Because you keep saying they are signed, they are signed. The other four cap to grants.
You can, you can lead the witness?
I think it's the owner of the evidence.
Are you, are you there?
Appendix four.
You can ask the question?
The voucher for cap to grant amounting to one hundred and seventy seven, five hundred and sixty nine kwacha.
Appendix D. What is the question Honourable?
Chair, I can comment?
What is the question Honourable Kalogo?
You understood the Honourable Chair, I can comment.
We we're deliberating here. We also have people following us. We are live on radio and TV. That's why I want the question to come out and you respond.
Why was it not audited and received? There's also another one, zero 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 twenty eight thirty one.
Yes, Council Secretary, you can come in now.
Apologies Chair for having come in.
Yes, I need to invite you to speak.
Understand Chair.
Thank you.
Chair, maybe the Honourable understand and thank you for the question Honourable. Maybe it's the payment, the way it was photocopied, but the one that I have here is actually showing that the payment voucher was audited.
You, yourself, you have a clear one?
Okay, clear, maybe it is just faint, but there are indications here that the voucher was audited Chair.
All the councils, when it comes to payment vouchers, everything to do with payment, it's faint, it can't be seen. But other evidence that you have tendered before this committee, which doesn't have to do with payments, they are very clear. What kind of a coincidence is this that it's only happening where you are supposed to pay? What are you hiding? Are you hiding anything?
Any reason as to why this is not clear?
And why other vouchers are appearing twice? Are they meant to cover the total figure? We have two vouchers that have appeared twice. Why have you filed twice? Are you managing the figure? And if the document is near, can we see the document that is signed?
I kindly submit the document that you are saying is clear to Secretariat so that the committee can also be comforted that indeed this document, this payment voucher was audited.
Thank you Chair, I don't have the original payment voucher, but the Honourable MP has observed that they are faint. What I have is the faint, but it can show that it was audited Chair, I submit.
Auditor? Auditor, did you authorize these payment vouchers? The auditor? The auditor?
Uh, thank you, Chair, it's only that the documents, maybe it's because of the photocopying of a lot of copies, but
Did you?
Yes, we did, yes, I did.
That is the answer I was looking for. Yes, Honorable Dr. Mons.
Uh, refer the committee to page six, isn't it, Chair?
Page?
Six.
Page six.
Page six is showing the table of progress towards the operational plan for twenty twenty-three. It's table, it's table three. And of particular interest is program number five. Program number five is the cause of the query can be seen at on page eight. This is dealing with the construction of council offices. The council has constructed this building, is constructing this building in phases, phase A, B, and the third one, I think, is phase C, which they're seeking find from the CDF to complete the building. My point of clarification, which I want to seek, is in yes, page eight, page eight, but the table is on page six.
Yes, please go ahead, Honorable.
Uh, what is the total budgeted cost of your council offices? That is phase A, phase B, phase C, before occupation? Because I know for sure you already have the construction plan, the design, and the buildings as the what you have, the progress that you have mentioned here is just at completion stage, waiting for funding from the CDF. But what is the budget to spend on this project, total budget?
Yes, Council Secretary, may I respond?
Chair, thank you very much, question from the Honorable MP for Kaumbwe. Chair, our initial budget when we started constructing the civic center in early twenty twenty-three, the plan started in twenty twenty-two, was two point five million. And when we started, the capital component and the little that we are getting from our local resources helped us to move to about fifty-five, close to sixty percent in terms of construction. Now, when that was removed and coupled with the low intake of revenue, we approached the CDF Committee and the Member of Parliament, because when you come and see the way we are operating, you understand where the need to construct offices actually started from. And I'm happy to report that at least the CDF Committee has assisted us with one point five million this year. If this money is made available this year, we are hopeful that by December, we can be done with the council offices and the officers who operate in a conducive environment, I submit, Chair. Not withstanding other variations and the cost variations, but that was our initial budget, I submit.
Honorable Member for Kaumbwe?
So the initial budget is two point five million for the whole project. And the CDF has promised to give you one point five million, which means you have spent one million yourselves. My question is, when I look at the Local Government Equalization Fund for twenty twenty-three, Pemba Council received the ten million, six hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and two quota. And there is a clear policy that twenty percent of the Local Government Equalization Fund should be used on the capital projects. In this case, when you are, you are staying in the makeshift offices, handling with all, with these programs of devolution, handling a lot of projects and a lot of functions devolved to your offices, the construction of council offices should have been the first priority. Now, considering that the Local Equalization Fund of ten million above was already sent to your account and twenty percent, when I calculate twenty percent of that, it comes to two million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-six. You have just confirmed that you spent one million towards the construction of these council offices and your budget was two point five just at the beginning from twenty twenty-two. Why would you, why didn't you use the Local Equalization Fund to construct this very important building? Because you had two point, almost two point two million. And I'm sure that from your budget of two point five, if when, when that money was all committed to that project, you could have, you could have managed to to do the construction within two point, two point two, that was sitting in your account from Local Government Equalization. I need that clarification.
Council Secretary, you may respond?
Chair, I appreciate the passion coming from the MP and also appreciating the problems that we have on the ground in terms of office accommodation, we are very grateful. Um, Chair, what I can say is that from the capital component, it was not just the civic center that we had targeted to do in twenty twenty-three. From the amount the MP is referring to, we had other commitments under capital. One was the construction of the Milk Impala, that was part. We also had the project like refuse base in markets. Uh, we had
Okay. Feel, feel free to, to pass on
Yeah.
if you don't have the information.
We also had the VIP toilets in markets that we are constructing. So that actually, Chair, incapacitated us in using the amount toward the civic center. I agree with the MP. The urgency for the offices cannot be overemphasized. But if we had said all the money be channeled toward the civic center, other operational costs would have been affected, including the projects that I've talked about. We had to split cutter for the others, at the same time also look at the civic center, I submit, Chair.
Thank you so much. Yes, Honorable Member for Kaumbwe?
It's a, it's a different question.
Please go ahead.
Yes, okay. The Town Clerk has said, of course, Pemba is it depends on agricultural activities for the survival of the, of the area constituency. Um, so you have a farm and fourteen heifers, fourteen calves supposed to be sold. Because the purpose of this dairy farm, of course, is just milk production. Now, when I go to Appendix A, you have Appendix A, council, a resolution from the full council to sell these bulls was made on, on in October twenty twenty-four. On the twentieth, it was the meeting was on the twentieth, October twenty twenty-three, on which meeting it was resolved that the you can check this, I can check from the evidence on page on Appendix one, from your letter that you wrote to the Permanent Secretary of Administration, Local Government. It was written on seventeenth September twenty twenty-four, but the resolution was passed on twentieth October twenty twenty-three. The question I have here is, why it had to take you one year to write to Ministry of Local Government and Housing to seek for authority to sell these bulls? At whose meeting resolution was passed in the full council meeting and it was a very hot agenda that time? One year later, after a resolution was passed in October twenty twenty-three, then you wrote to the ministry in September, uh, the following year, after one year of that council, full council meeting, first question. The second question is in the letter that you wrote to the Ministry for, to seek authority to sell these bulls, it's not on letterhead. And, uh, the, well, maybe it's the photocopying, but the stamp's not also clear. So, does this explain why up to today, Ministry of Local Government has not responded to your, to your letter? And you are, and then you are still holding on to the bulls because it is now five months since, no, 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 yes, it's now five months since you wrote to Ministry of Local Government to seek authority? Is it because the letter is not acknowledged, it is just coming from the street? Does no, it is not on letterhead? And the third question is in what impact has the delay of the, the sale of these bulls caused on your milk production? Thank you.
As a Secretary, you may respond, please?
Thank you, Chair, appreciate the concerns from the Honorable Member of Parliament, they are genuine. Chair, I'll start with the delay in submission of the letter to the Ministry for seeking approval to dispose of the bulls. Chair, when you are, you are intending to sell something, you normally want to put it in a condition where the buyers will be attracted, attracted and also offer a good price. We resolved as management, when we went to the farm, that we try to put our animals on a special diet. So that, because these are male animals and obviously the people that would come to buy would either buy them for slaughter or to go and reproduce. So we told the manager and we increased the food, uh, supplement to the farm so that they are in a good condition. Initially, we are not supposed to take that long. We were just supposed to take about six so months and also ensure that they are in a state where they can give us a good price. That is what also consultation on the process of selling, that was also caused the delay, but mainly we wanted to put them in the condition where they can give us a good return in terms of selling. Chair, on the letterhead, this letter that was attached here by my officers or by myself, because I'm held responsible, is a copy confirming that the Ministry received our, our letter of submission. At my level, Chair, I cannot send a letter to a ministry which is who pretends all my operation without the letterhead. It had the letterhead. This is the confirmation letter that they received, I submit, Chair. Then maybe on the impact, I also appreciate the passion from the MP concerning what could have done to the income. One, our target could have been that we increase the stock. Because our core is to increase on milk production. So if we had sold the animals, our intention was to buy five heifers. So that we increase on the animals that we, that we have too, is to improve on the infrastructure on the farm, I submit, Chair.
Honorable Mulunda? Yes, Honorable MP for Kaumbwe, as, as we wind up?
Yeah, just a short comment, of course, uh, when you start as full council in October, I appreciate the initiative that you need to, you needed to fatten to, to get a better price. But what was, what should have been your priority was to, immediately that decision was made, then you apply to Ministry of Local Government for authority. So you would have that authority in your hands. It would, they would not give you a specific period to say, yes, you are allowed to go ahead and sell, but sell within one week. They would not write like that. But they would just give you the authority to sell. And now you would be able eh, now you can see, you are applying after one year and there's no response, five months, I'm, I'm sure the bulls are ready now. So you could have actually had to seek authority immediate after that decision was made and then you would have sold, you'd have sold at your own time because you would have already the authority in your hands. So there's a lot of opportunity costs that have been incurred because of the lapse in the, in the communication. Thank you, just a comment.
Thank you so much. I'm, I'm sure the parent ministry has also taken note of the concerns of the committee. We need feedback so that we can let go of these bulls that are affecting the milk production at the farm. The Council Secretary and your team, as we conclude this session, I wish to extend my sincere appreciation to you and your team for your valuable, valuable contributions and commitment to the governance and development of Pemba District. Our discussions today have highlighted several critical areas that require urgent action and strategic intervention to improve financial management, service delivery and overall accountability. Some of the key takeaways and action points include, number one, financial management and revenue collection. The council must work towards resolving the budget deficit by accelerating revenue collection strategies, particularly from the sale of animals, milk production and land sales. The improved planning and focusing should be adopted to ensure that revenue projections are realistic and attainable. The council must explore expanding land sales beyond local restrictions to attract more buyers and generate more revenue. Number two, enhancing service delivery and infrastructure development. The completion of the farmhouse and the full operations of the Milk Impala and the completion of your offices should be prioritized to maximize revenue generation from livestock farming. Agent action is needed in the acquisition of firefighting equipment and employment of fire officers, ensuring that the council fulfills its mandate. Number three, accountability and compliance. The settlement of statutory obligations, including payments to statutory bodies, must be prioritized to prevent further debt accumulation. The council must provide a clear roadmap, a clear update on outstanding liabilities, including interest accrued and put in place a structured repayment plan. Number four, strengthening stakeholder engagement and public service efficiency. The council is advised to intensify stakeholder engagement and public partnerships to unlock alternative revenue sources and improve service delivery. In conclusion, while we acknowledge the challenges first, we must remain steadfast in our commitment to good governance and financial accountability and sustainable development. The way forward demands strategic planning, collective effort and an ever accountability to ensure tangible progress in our service delivery. And finally, I wish to withdraw the immunity that was conferred on you at the start of our deliberations. What you now submit going forward is unprotected and you'll be on your own. I wish to officially end the session. Thank you so much for coming.
Well, there you have it, thus the Council Secretary from Pemba Morning Well, there you have it. Thus, the Council Secretary from Pemba Municipal Council, Mr. Chilombo Samuel, with his entourage, making their presentation to the local government, local government accounts on the consideration of the report of the Auditor General on the audit of the accounts of local authorities for the financial year ended 31st December 2023. Earlier on, we had the Council Secretary for Mofulaya Municipal Council, which was led by Mrs. Kasonde Chisanga Musongole. And later on, we had the Council Secretary from Zimba Town Council, who happens to be Mr. Collins Simonga, together with his entourage. Still to come, at 16 hours thereabout, we expect the Council Secretary from Sinazongwe Town Council and that will mark the end of today's submission by various local authorities that were scheduled to present, to, or to present to the Local Government Accounts Committee. We'll take a short break and when we come back, I'll be able to introduce the next local authority that will make their presentation to the Local Government Accounts. My name is Porcent Indavi. Let's be together as you continue watching Parliament Television.